Are you, are you here about the Telly Mill Trail? Telly Mill Trail, what, what are you speaking, what do you want to say? Legacy Mayor.
Oh, I know what that is, sorry. Uh, I didn't know. Yeah, Legacy Mayor is on this agenda, um, they'll. Probably not on the church agenda, but I'm not sure which one yet, I'm just sorry.
Okay, glad you're here. All right, good evening, everybody. So we'll go ahead and call this November eighth, twenty twenty two, meeting of the Planning Commission to order. I want to welcome everybody. Thank you for being here. Our first order of business of the evening will be roll call. If we could please start with my far left.
Deb Cameron.
Erica Harris.
Elizabeth Shin.
Scott Brown.
And I'm Thomas O'Brien. Welcome. Next order of business is review and approval of the October eleventh, twenty twenty two minutes. Has everybody had a chance to take a look at what was sent to us? And if so, may we get a motion?
I move to approve the minutes as written.
Commissioner Cameron has moved to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Shin seconds. Is there any debate on the motion? Seeing no debate, I'll move to the voting. All in favor of approving the minutes for the October eleventh twenty two meeting, raise your hand. All opposed, raise your hand. Looks like the vote carries by five to none. Moving forward, it now looks like we have some organizational and procedural items to discuss. Paul?
Yep. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. So I'm speaking tonight in my role as a representative of the staff, and we consider our, our job with the Planning Commission to be a resource, to be sort of of help to you to make this as easy as it can be and support your service in the commission. As part of that, we're like occasionally just thinking and mulling our head of how we can better do this. This time what we came up with is proposing to provide sort of on a more permanent basis, the opportunity for briefing, and we want to structure this in a way that it's helpful and that it is useful to you all. So I'm asking for your feedback on this, and I want to give a few parameters in what direction we were thinking. A briefing would be posting the minutes a week before the meeting. So meeting is on Tuesday. We, we post the package on Tuesday. So the briefing would have to be sort of the, the weeks sort of, or the, the days following the posting of the package, so potentially Thursday or Friday. What we had thought of is to do with two separate briefing slots, and that's partially to provide you all a bit of flexibility based on your timelines, and then partially to get around the open records laws, but we're limited to three commissioners each without advertising. The times would be sort of during work hours, but we have flexibility sort of during the times of day. If the lunch hour works best, so something like the twelve to one, we, we would be happy to accommodate it. If the morning hours work best, we'd be happy to accommodate it if, if the afternoon works best. Please do let us know where we can fit into your schedules best. Same thing for day of the week. So we posted typically at the, at the end of day on Tuesday. So Thursday could be a good date. We all can sort of skim the, the agenda and just get a sort of first instinct of what's, what's happening, or Friday could work as well. We could also do Monday, just let us know. Then form potentially the easiest maybe sort of a digital meeting where, where you all can jump on it potentially at work or however it works best. And this would be sort of on a voluntary basis. So you may decide on your own if sort of the case is easy enough and you don't have any pressing questions, but it is sort of a, a resource that's, that's available to you all. And then this is not supposed to replace the option to always give us a call, right? Like we're available, a few of us have, have done this from time to time before. That's, that's, you know, that wouldn't be replaced with this. If, if it works, sort of, and you have questions on Friday, give us a call on Friday. And we'll try to fit you in as, as best as we can. Yeah, with this, I would be interesting. You know what the preferences of the commission is, and if something like this would be a useful proposition.
Does anybody have any thoughts about that that they want to share or want to ask as we kind of refine how this is going to look going forward? Sure.
Um, so I appreciated the one this last week that we did. The only thing that I would want to make sure we do is that any discussion and information is still shared in these public meetings. Because the public, I think, has a right to hear the discussion and questions as well. So that would be something that would be helpful, I think. In particular, one of the things that I think would be valuable in these, in the briefings would be historical context. So for example, if we use the, if we use the case that we're discussing tonight, there was historical context to this case that commissioners who were coming on board would benefit from. Again, I would also find a way to integrate that historical context into the meetings as well for the public's information. That's just my thoughts.
Anybody have any other thoughts they want to share or queries they want to make?
I'll just say I also thought it was helpful this week to have that, that opportunity to kind of just clarify what would be presented in front of us today. And not to counter the previous point, but you know, if there's, I think if there's a way to make it where staff is just presenting clarifications so that we're eliminating questions when we get to this meeting to make this meeting run smoother. I think that would be helpful. And then we don't have, you know, if, if there's a way to kind of eliminate information that's shared only with the commissioners, then we wouldn't have to rehash that at the meeting itself. Not, I mean, I think it's important, obviously, to be transparent, but just saying if there's a way to kind of just keep it to procedural or clarifications that we talk through to make it easier to run our meeting. I think that's the objective anyway. Anyway, that's, that's my thought.
Please.
Just a, a, a quick thought in response to, to that would be, the reason why I value the questions is I think when we ask questions up here, it helps spark other commissioners to think about things in different ways. And the nature of these briefings is that we're not all together, and we wouldn't be able to hear each other's questions or the answers to those questions. And so I think the dialogue that we have back and forth here is, is helpful for one another. And it's helpful as a larger group, and I think it's also helpful to specific cases. Not, not everything is obviously very popular, but we have had cases that are, you know, quite popular and a lot of public interest. And so I think for the public to hear the dialogue and the questions and the answers that are born from those is a benefit. And so that's my thought behind wanting to keep, make sure that we have a repeat here because the nature of the briefings is that we are not all together. That's my only, my only thought in response to that.
Somebody else have any thoughts or, yes?
I think it's a great idea because my questions are usually dumb, and I don't like to embarrass myself in front of the public. And so I appreciate the opportunity to ask questions of you guys more quietly.
Any other questions that we want to entertain at this point? If, if there aren't any, I, I would like to ask that we consider this, and the city attorney may have thoughts about this. So I understand you probably can't give an answer. Is there a way to record the presentation? I mean, I know when, when, when one uses Zoom, there's a simple record button. Is there a way to record the presentations that might be made so that those could be listened to and reviewed? A lot of times I don't have a whole lot of schedule control. I have a whole lot of other factors, and that may not be something that can be done, but it would be pretty cool if at one thirty AM, when I have some time, I'd pop it open, you know, if I'm having trouble sleeping. So it's, I, I would ask that we consider it if it's possible, and if it's not, then I completely understand. So thank you. There, there is no action requested of Planning Commission on this. This is more informational, correct? All right. Well, thank you for that. And I think it's going to make us a better planning commission, you know, certainly having access to, to, to chew on things in advance, to ask some questions in advance. It's going to streamline us and make us better at our job. So thank you for pushing that narrative forward. We appreciate it. All right. Well, I think at this time then we'll go ahead and move on to unfinished business, in particular SLP twenty-two dash oh two, which was previously deferred. It's a request for a special land use permit to allow group living use. And we've seen some changes since this has last been before. So we're interested to hear about that. Thank you.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Yes, there have been some significant changes to the application. So let me go ahead and clarify. The applicant has rescinded their request for multifamily housing rentals and rescinded their request for additional requests for relief. So if you recall, that was request for relief related to things like a street buffer width and things like that. The only remaining request is to allow a group living facility. So that was the nursing home portion of their request. That remains the same. So overall, the goal this evening, what we're, what you all are looking at and what you'll need to vote on is essentially they have taken their twenty eighteen site plan and adjusted the northeast corner. And they have removed a residential building and replaced it with the nursing facility. So that's the change that's occurred. It's pretty significant. So let me quickly give some background again on that twenty eighteen proposal. Because I think that'll be sort of important to, you know, your guys' discussions. But overall, this is a nineteen point four acre site. It currently contains two six-story and one five-story story office buildings from nineteen seventies. It's currently surrounded by around a thousand surface parking spaces. This is an aerial image of the property. To your left is the north end. So those two existing office buildings in the middle that are marked with stars, those would remain the same. And then per the twenty eighteen site plan, the office building along the south, which has the star on the right hand, that would be removed, demolished and replaced. So in twenty eighteen, the property was rezoned from office institutional to one of our perimeter center zoning districts, PC dash two. What was approved was a one point three eight million square foot mixed use development. It was originally a development of regional impact. And that original request also required some relief related to build two zone requirements. All of that stays the same. The change to the site plan is fairly minor, so it doesn't trigger any additional DRI, which if you're not familiar, just stands for development of regional impact, which means it gets reviewed on a much larger scale by multiple jurisdictions. But that didn't need to be redone because again, the change is relatively minor. But overall, in twenty eighteen, what was approved was a new office building, a maximum twenty-story office building, and the construction of four new residential buildings that are up to fourteen stories each and a two acre park. So this is the twenty eighteen site plan. The twenty twenty two site plan now is essentially the same. It looks a little different because it's, you know, got color and a couple more notes related to the programming of the park. But the only real difference is, like I said, that northeast corner where there's no longer a residential building, it is instead a max, an up to five-story group living facility. So that would be the north nursing home portion. And that is what is triggering the special land use permit request. So overall, they're reducing the residential density by two hundred and twenty-five units and proposing a new one hundred and fifty bed nursing home. So this is a chart showing what the change in density will be. Essentially, it will be a twenty-five percent change in the residential component, a twenty-five percent reduction. And then the only other change is the addition of one hundred and fifty nursing home beds. Overall, we don't anticipate this having an impact on traffic, infrastructure, utilities and schools as compared to what was approved in twenty eighteen. In fact, the impact would, would likely be greatly reduced, especially as it relates to traffic. It'll be significantly lower. So I've marked in red here on the twenty eighteen site plan where the change is occurring. So if you look from the twenty eighteen site plan on the left to the twenty twenty two site plan on the right, the only major difference is the new building. They removed that residential building and that structured parking, and they've replaced it with the group living facility and an approximately eighty space surface parking lot. And then this is just a close-up view of the layout of the nursing home versus the layout of the former residential building. So overall, we feel that this request for a special land use permit facility to allow the group living meets all of the, you know, intents of the perimeter center character area as it's laid out in the comprehensive plan. And we don't anticipate it having any adverse impacts on adjoining land uses. And overall, we see it as a positive, you know, infill project in the area. So our recommendation is for approval, subject to the conditions that we've detailed in the staff memorandum. And then also for reference, I've just included the phasing plan that we've created here. So the first phase would be the new nursing home as well as the trail crossing from the new trail over to this property. And then the remainder of the project would be in the remaining phases. So two, three and four. If you have any questions, I am available to answer them. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Come on forward. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madeline. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is David Kirkham with the Law Firm of Troutman Pepper, Hamilton Sanders, six hundred Peachtree Street in Atlanta. It's my pleasure to be before you this evening, representing Grub Properties. With me this evening from Grub Properties are Paul O'Shaughnessy, who's the Senior Vice President of Development, and Christie Berry, who's a Senior Development Associate. As, as Madeline indicated, we're, we're here sort of to pick up where we left off, but pick up importantly with a pick up, uh, importantly, uh, with a significantly pared down proposal, uh, for your consideration. I'm actually going to hand things over, uh, to Chris, uh, who's going to run briefly through our presentation. Uh, and then Chris, Paul and I'll be available to answer any questions you might have, uh, if need be at the end of our presentation. We'd like to reserve whatever time we, we have remaining for rebuttal if needed. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. My name is Chris DeBerry. I'm a developer with Grub Properties. Uh, today we're going to discuss really the major change that we're bringing to our proposals since September. Uh, given the feedback of the planning commission, uh, the Dunwoody HOA and the people of Dunwoody. So that major change is really focusing on the, uh, bringing a medical service provider and employer in ProMedica to the site. But first a little bit about ourselves. Most of you are very familiar with us. Uh, we're a developer both in the commercial and multifamily side based out of Charlotte, North Carolina, but have really grown our operations, uh, on a national scale. Madeline did a great job of, uh, explaining the overview of our proposal today, but this is our site here at Perimeter East, forty-one, uh, forty-seven and fifty-three PCE. In terms of our twenty eighteen improved site plan, um, this has also been seen by the group here. Uh, the major change to our proposal for twenty eighteen is highlighted here in the, um, red rectangle. What you do not see here is the apartments where we are focusing on our, our, our proposal is the hundred and twenty, uh, thousand square feet of medical office space that ProMedica plans to bring to the site. This is another look at the, uh, the rendering at, at a perimeter east. All right, digging into the medical office here, uh, ProMedica plans, plans to bring a hundred to a hundred and twenty thousand square feet of medical office space to the, to our location, expects to bring about three hundred jobs to the site. This is just, uh, a few quick flat facts about ProMedica, but the main take, takeaway here is ProMedica has a uh, long history of owning and operating medical office space. And at this site specifically, they plan on bringing, uh, sub-acute skilled nursing and rehab facility. What that means is this is really short-term, uh, transition for people that were once in the hospital and they stay here for about three to six weeks, uh, before they go home. So this is not a long-term stay for their long-term patients they plan to keep at, at a separate site. So that's important takeaway there. Little bit about, uh, Atlanta medical office trends, why medical office makes sense here in Dunwoody. Uh, I'm going to refer to the sixty-five plus age demographic as a mature, uh, demographic, which makes up thirteen and a half percent of the Atlanta metro's population. Uh, that mature demographic is expected to increase at a rapid pace compared to the national average at three point three percent annually over the next five years. And then in terms of medical office space, which we'll talk about in these next couple of slides, Atlanta ranks as one of the highest or fastest growing, um, demographics in terms of sixty-five plus, but has minimal medical office under construction. Looking into the medical office trends, from a vacancy standpoint, the traditional office sector has been challenged. Um, where medical office has, uh, vacancy rate that sits between fifteen, uh, percent, around fifteen percent on a national level. Uh, in terms of inventory growth, you see it's decreased over the past five years for medical office space. Um, with that sector facing a lot of, uh, construction headwinds such as the cost and, uh, financing issues that are felt really across all property sectors from a development standpoint. And if you look at the Cobb County, there's less than a million square feet of what we're calling, uh, rehab, uh, and skilled nursing facilities. Taking a look at this chart here on the horizontal axis, you have the supply and we're measuring the supply by the medical office inventory under construction. On a vertical axis, that's the population or expected population growth over the next two years. So if you're in that top left quadrant, um, just to break it down, um, quickly, you have a high demand, given the high population growth, but you have low supply just giving the medical office under construction. So that orangish reddish diamond that you see, that's, that represents the national average and all those markets, including Atlanta in the top left quadrant, have high demand but low supply of medical office space. Think it's helpful to look at how medical office compares to traditional office space. Cause based on the source that you look at, here's JLL, it's the, uh, second largest Atlanta, um, office market. Um, it's got about twenty-seven million square feet of office space. From a vacancy standpoint, uh, about one in every five buildings is vacant within the market. Um, and then you have another five hundred thousand square feet of office space under construction, um, that could potentially contribute to that ongoing problem. In the background here, there's no surprise. Those may be familiar. You see the State Farm building not too far away. They have also seen some, I don't want to say issues, but it's been a slow leasing process at that building as well. Somewhere between twenty and twenty-five percent vacancy at that building as well. And that's a brand new building as, uh, a lot of the sector, a lot of developers are having trouble figuring out the future landscape of, uh, what office space looks like. Couple of key takeaways before I open up to questions, uh, Paul and I will answer any questions that you have here. But first takeaway here is that we want to add medical office services to the community. Second, we, we believe this is meeting the needs of an aging population in the city of Dunwoody and the greater Atlanta. And then last but not least, this opportunity to bring three hundred, uh, high school jobs to the city. So from there, thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Commission questions? Okay, let's go ahead and move forward with some of those.
What's the percentage of the building going to be? You discussed rehab, skilled nursing and office. What's the breakdown of that in this building?
In terms of, so it's all one component, if you're saying in terms of like how the floor is built, separated from a skilled nursing and rehab facility? Is that the question?
Well, yeah.
Yeah. So I mean, I think it's effectively all skill.
Yep.
So the medical office is sort of a broader term under which these types of skilled nursing facilities. All, but the specific use of this facility is that rehab and nursing.
So the offices are going to be related to the skilled.
Exactly.
It's whatever administrative work they have on site in tandem with that.
And then kind of my follow-up, how does the aging population affect or impact the usage of this building?
Absolutely. So I had a chance to talk to the folks from ProMedica, their average age in terms of the, the residents or tenants that stay there, if you want to use that word, is about sixty-two to sixty-five years old. So that tends to be the people that stay at the facility. Now, I will say that doesn't mean it's the only people that stay at this, uh, type of facility, but that tends to be their clientele.
Let's go ahead and move forward. Any questions? Any questions?
Um, you said that the three hundred jobs that, that you mentioned, that's for this, uh, nursing facility alone?
Yep.
Okay. Um, I guess my concern, um, you know, use and everything, I'm, uh, I'm fairly straightforward on that, but, um, the parking lot that you guys showed on the, um, site plan, uh, it's just a, a small surface lot, uh, towards, towards the rear of the building. Um, I guess my concern, and maybe you could speak to this, is, um, one, if you're talking about three hundred employees, that looks like a, a fairly small, uh, surface lot. I know some may be taking transit, but, um, there's also a lot of other activities, um, patients being dropped off, patients being picked up. Um, I would assume a lot of food service and other medical supplies are going to be delivered to the building. Um, it's just not completely clear, um, you know, from the site plan, how all of that would function in terms of loading and unloading freight and, um, uh, I don't know if you would call it residents or patients due to the longevity of their stays, but, um, just kind of trying to get a sense of how all that will function.
Yeah, Scott, great question. I had a chance to visit them at their Emory site as well. Uh, we've talked about in terms of their ask, how many spots do they need? They responded with eighty, which is represented here on the chart. In terms of the three hundred employees and how that works, it is on a rotation, right? So they may have, I'm throwing out hypothetical numbers, they may have ten doctors that are employed there, but they may rotate two at a time. Um, the same with the nurses as well, which accommodates the, uh, number of spaces that you're seeing here.
So the, the other thing to take into account is, you know, the folks that are using the loading, sorry, the loading would occur right now. It's supposed to occur kind of on this side, uh, if you can see the cursor, um, on that side. So it's more or less segregated. There will be, um, some sort of ability for them to, they, they probably need some uh, adjustment of this, just to show a loading, uh, a zone on that side, but they need to do a full approval here to know exactly how their footprint's going to work on that site. But like Chris said, you know, you have the eighty spaces. When this first phase is finished, and we've talked a lot about the, the challenges of construction of condominiums in the interim, while that's still trying to work itself out, there's quite a lot of parking across the site. If you, if you've been there, I, I think probably thirty percent of the, the parking currently is being utilized and we already have some folks, um, that are very low parkers that we are locking into their leases for their low parking ability. So like, uh, the current existing parking situation is more than underutilized. And then once this construction, full construction would happen, you have this very large structured parking deck, which has been sized to accommodate the other parking needs. So it, it really evolves as the site evolves. So today, no problem, plenty of, of extra parking there. Um, in the future, if condos come back and we can start that construction, build the parking deck first, and then they would have additional, if there is additional parking needed in that structured parking facility.
Okay. So just to clarify, the, um, the structured parking is intended to eventually accommodate spill-over parking, uh, from this use at the, at the full build-out?
If, if it's needed, um, just as sort of an overflow, they want eighty spaces. That's what they say they need. Chris visited their facility. That's generally what they have in their current operation. So, um, we feel like it shouldn't be a problem, um, but there is an overflow potential on site.
Okay. Thank you for your clarifications.
I have, uh, just a couple of questions for you. Um, due to the, uh, the length of stay and the nature of the folks that are staying, we're looking at a, uh, uh, an insurance payer situation as opposed to a private pay situation for most of the folks that'll be staying. Is that correct? Th- these are going to be Medicare patients by and large. So Medicare would be the payer in most cases.
Most of the time the insurance will be the payer. We did have it, once again, I had a chance to talk to them and that stay of, or length of stay is dictated, uh, by the insurance company to that, to your point there. Um, that could be as little as three weeks or as long as six weeks based on that insurance coverage.
But they, they, at their other sites, and they're planning on this site to be, to, to accept Medicare as a payer, meaning that they're going to have to pass JCO accreditation and, and, and comport with CMS regs. Is that correct? Is that your understanding?
I, I think that's, you know, we're not operators in that space. So we, all we know is really from what we've been told, uh, from ProMedica, who's really the expert in that field, but you know, you can assume at the age of sixty-two to sixty-five that it's mostly Medicare.
Not sixty-two, you can't, but.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. All right. Uh, thank you. That'll, that'll do it for my questions. Uh, are there any further questions for the applicants at this point? Uh, we, we've, uh, oh, was there? Okay, please.
Um, just curious, because of the unloading, loading, is that something that will come to you all later in a site plan? The, the getting into the weeds of the details of finishes and, and how the unloading and loading will go?
Um, yeah. So typically we handle that during L, um, LDP and building permit review. There are standards in the code that specify where the loading docks can be located and the minimum size requirements.
Okay. If there are no further questions for the applicants, um, we, we had them speak roughly, let's go ahead and call it about ten minutes. Are there, is there anybody speaking in opposition to this plan that would like the opportunity to stand up? And we are, we, we may be broadcasting on Zoom, but there's no participants on Zoom. Is that correct? Okay. Uh, so is there anybody speaking in opposition to this? Okay. Uh, are there any further questions, comments or debate, or is anybody prepared to form a motion at this time?
Um, I would like to make a motion to approve SLEP twenty-two dash zero-two with staff's, um, conditions.
All right. There's a motion on the floor to approve SLEP twenty-two dash O two with staff's additions. Do we have a second? Oh, and that was Commissioner Harris that formed that, by the way. Is there a second?
A second.
Commissioner Cameron seconds. Is there any debate, uh, to the nature of the motion, uh, that we wish to take up at this time? Seeing no debate, it would appear that, uh, we're prepared to move forward for a vote. All in favor of approving SLEP twenty-two dash O two with, uh, staff's modifications, uh, raise your hand now. All opposed, like sign. Uh, the motion carries five to none. Moving forward. Thank you, everybody. Is there any new business at this time? All right. Well, then I'm imagining there's not other business at this time, but we're prepared to take it on. Okay. At this time, is there any public comment? Anybody from the public who would like us to hear anything tonight? All right. Well, then at this, at this point, how about commission comment? Is there any commission comment? Feel free, please.
Um, I just want to, first of all, thank you for bringing the medical building. I, I do think that will be a benefit. It's appropriately placed close to, I know informally, Pill Hill, um, all the hospitals there. I do want to say that I am excited about this project and however you might redevelop it for the future. I know that, um, in the September meeting, you know, my personal concern was with the full amount of apartments. I do hope at some point you come back with a compromise and meet in the middle. Um, because there are a lot of amazing elements to this project and I know that, um, I know that the current status of, uh, the real estate market and, and the work market provides challenges. Um, but I do hope to see something fun and interesting in the future.
Thank you, Commissioner Harris. Is there any other commission comment? Hearing none, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Hearing none, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.